Good evening, welcome to the Hingham Board Selecting Meeting for Tuesday, August 8th, 2017. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of our last session dated July 25th.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of our session dated July 25th as presented.
As amended.
As amended and presented.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment on items not on the agenda. Okay. Next is a public hearing on the request of Aquarian to install and maintain approximately 1,000 feet of eight-inch ductile iron-water main in Simmons Road. Harry, Steve, could you come up to the table? Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Steve Olson with Aquarian Water Company. Does anyone need a plan of the proposed project?
I think they should all have it.
Do we have it? Yep, we have it, yep.
Thank you.
Steve, could you just, for the benefit of the audience, briefly describe the work that's going to be taking place?
Yes.
And the timing of the work?
Yes, and I'll give you some background, too. So, the proposed Simmons Road project represents our third proactive water main replacement project in Hingham this year. It exemplifies our responsiveness to customer issues and a proactive approach to infrastructure capital investments. As you just heard, our proposed project includes replacing approximately 1,000 feet of existing four-inch and two-inch water main with new eight-inch ductile water mine, uh, walked, ductile water iron main on Simmons Road. The scope of work also includes replacing the existing fire hydrant and adding a second fire hydrant to the end of the road. This should increase or decrease homeowner insurance for the area. The project is being proposed to replace an older water main which has been determined to have reached its useful service life. Once completed, the project will improve the water quality and availability of fire flow protection for the entire Simmons Road neighborhood. During the past year, there were several episodes of discolored water in the neighborhood, most recently in early June 2017. We work closely with residents and public officials, the Water Supply Committee, Board of Health, to keep them informed as to our investigations of the situation and water quality sampling results through emails, phone calls, meetings, and personal site visits. We believe that communication is important for operational situations and capital projects. Those on the board, and Harry may recall emails that we forwarded when scheduling a targeted flushing program on the Simmons Road neighborhood. We tried to do some operational things to address the project, but determined that a capital improvement was going to be required. We did coordinate a neighborhood meeting last night at our last grant-a-location hearing that was suggested or recommended, so we did that last night. It was held at one of the gracious residents on Simmons Road. We discussed the proposed construction impacts, noise, and construction with heavy equipment and schedule. The contractor was present. We planned, he plans on mobilizing the week before Labor Day and then starting construction activities the week after Labor Day. So, all those present, we discussed parking and vehicular access and the timing of replacing water services. We're committed to keeping the neighborhood informed on a weekly basis via email, similar to other construction projects. We plan also on working closely with the DPW to coordinate the trench restoration and compaction and to keep you and other public officials informed as to project milestones. Our manager of communications and operations, Ronit Goldstein, will be keeping customers informed and on available project-related issues through weekly emails, and we're committed to providing the residents of Hingham with the highest quality water and service.
Thank you.
Yep.
Paul Karen, questions?
Now, will this enhance the ability of the fire department to deal with house fires above Simmons Road, or?
Above Simmons Road? It'll provide, it'll provide additional hydrants for them to connect to, yes. So, there's currently one hydrant on Simmons Road about halfway down, or a third of the way down, so we're going to replace that hydrant and then put one at the end of the road.
Okay, so the letter says this water main project will also include new services and two new fire hydrants.
Right.
So, that's not exactly right? Or your, ones are replacement?
There are going to be two new hydrants.
Okay.
One will replace an existing and the other one will be an addition.
Okay.
Additional hydrant.
And what is the reference to new, will also include new services? What's that?
So, each home has an individual water service, and the water service is made up of two pieces, from the main to the property line and from the property line to the house. So, we're going to be replacing from the main to the property line for each customer. There's about, there's 19 customers.
And Steve, this, the road will be closed at certain points while this work is taking place?
That's going to be determined by the police department. It's a dead-end road, so, you know, we will have a pre-construction meeting before construction, and the police department will evaluate, you know, detailed requirements and whether or not to close the road. But all residents there will have, you know, access to get, get in and out as well as emergency vehicles.
Yeah, I appreciate your notifying and meeting with the residents. Since it's a dead-end street, I was just thinking that that's the first week of school and, you know, bus routes and, you know, new parents, new bus drivers, so I would imagine that the bus stop is actually at the end of the street so that this, this project won't be disruptive to the bus routes.
Correct. There's a lot of younger children there that walk to the end of Simmons Road. There's a path that goes to the, I think it's the foster school, elementary school. So, but we did talk about, you know, making, it's a narrow road, making sure that we're safe with school kids and other, you know, traffic and keeping, and we know that young kids sometimes like to watch construction activities and just, we express to their parents that, you know, just keep, keep your distance with parent, with the kids and with animals and, you know, that sort of thing.
Well, so to Mary's point, then, will there be, will there be a designated pathway by the construction site for kids walking to school?
There will be, will be in one travel lane, so the other travel lane should be open.
Okay.
Yep. And we under, we've heard the times where the kids will be walking, you know, 8:30 in the morning and then, you know, after 2:00 in the afternoon.
Okay. And back to Paul's question about the fire hydrants.
Yeah.
Will the fire hydrants be out of service for the length of the project, the current fire hydrant?
Nope. It'll, the existing service and the existing hydrant will stay alive until the new pipe is online and operational, and then, and then all the services and the hydrants will be switched over to the new, new pipe, and then one by one will replace the individual homeowner services.
Harry, anything to add?
No, I think Steve's covered it all, and your questions have been very, uh...
Yep, and I appreciate all of the, the different specifications that are laid out in the letter with respect to preparation of the site, kind of leaving, leaving the site the way it was found, et cetera. Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, if not, I would take a motion.
So, do you, since it's a dead-end street, then you don't think there's any need to sort of formally notify the schools of the work during that week? So, neighbors have been notified?
You know, it might not be a bad idea just to contact the Transportation Department.
Once approved, we will notify all the public officials, including the School Department. We didn't want to be presumptuous and assume we had approval.
Okay. Yep. Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the request of the Aquarian Water Company to install and maintain approximately 1,000 feet of eight-inch ductile iron-water main in Simmons Road. This water main will originate from the intersection with Otis Hill Road and continue onto the paved surface of Simmons Road for the entire length to completion at House Number 39 Simmons Road. This project will also include new services and two new fire hydrants. The water main will replace an existing four-inch and two-inch main that is currently in service. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated July 18th, 2017.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both so much.
Have a good evening.
Next on the agenda is the South Shore Country Club feasibility study for a potential swimming pool complex. Hi, Jay.
Hello, how are you guys?
Good.
Hi, Jay.
Hi, Roger.
Hi, everybody. Good evening.
Roger. Thank you. Thank you for hearing us today. I'm, you all know Jay McGrail, Director of the Country Club. Before you today, the matter before you today is, we're seeking your authorization to enter into contract for professional services for the feasibility associated with the potential expansion or addition of a pool at the South Shore Country Club itself. The, the process under, follow was Mass. General Law Chapter 7, 38A and a half. We solicited qualification packages, which is the requisite for this particular procurement type, so an RFQ was issued through our office. We received five responses as a result. That process included interviews with a potential design firm that we'd be working with, architectural firm, if you will, and the group associated with selecting the, the name before you, which is Bargum Hendry and Archetype Inc., located on Nine Channel Street in Boston, Massachusetts. Those folks that we assembled to help select and review the qualification packages included Jay, Bill Friend in the audience today, Mark Thorell, and myself. And from that, from that interview process, the review of, again, the qualification packages submitted, BHNA was the firm that we selected, or we thought would be the most appropriate for this type of work. Just to restate, the qualification, the RFQ that was issued that they responded to, we outlined what we envisioned the project would need. It was based on all the discussions that informed the RFQ, and the respondents submitted a proposal that reflected the criteria in the RFQ. In addition to that, we asked that they, and they have, sign a standard town design contract, designer contract, and that's, so their proposal is a, is an addendum or an exhibit, I should say, to the, to the town standard design contractor. So, with that, we'll take questions unless you want something to ask.
I just wanted to say a couple of quick things. I, you know, it was a really good process. It started about a year ago when we originally came up with the idea to go to CPC for this feasibility study, and we went through the CPC process and town meeting, and then thankfully we had Roger and Tom here to walk us through this RFQ process, and really, they did a lot of the heavy lifting for us, and I thank the both of you. Just also thank my committee that helped us come up with this idea for the feasibility study. Rod, Bill, and Paul are here in the audience, and Tom took time out of his day to do the interviews with us also, so he interviewed all of, all of the candidates, the different engineers, and it's really been an impressive process to this point, and I'm really looking forward to starting the work now, so.
Thank you. Paul Karen, questions?
Um, what's the timeframe on this gentleman? How long is it going to take?
So, we're going to get started right away. By right away, I mean like tomorrow, you know, hoping that this goes well. They're, they want to come and do some traffic engineering while we're in the heat of the season, so they're going to come hopefully this week while we're still involved with summer camps and the pool's up and full running. The next few months is the timeline, and we're hoping to have some stuff wrapped up by October, you know, where, one of the things that we've talked about moving forward is a potential request at CPC this year, and therefore, they're, one of the things we talked about during the interview process was the CPC timeline and how that will affect the work that we need to get done in the next few months.
So, we want to answer the budget cycle with an idea of what's, what potentially might be out there.
Is there an expectation that what will be proposed is in the same site, or will it be on the property generally?
There's, there's, there's the, yeah, that's undetermined yet. One of the options is that site, and then there's a few other options on the property that we're also looking at.
Is it going to be the same size?
Uh, that's also, the first part of this process that we wrote into the RFQ is the financial feasibility, so we're going to look at some different ideas and then find out what revenue can be generated from those locations, and then try to figure out what kind of debt service we can handle with that revenue. So, I don't know yet. I mean, it could be, one of the things we're going to look at is trying to fix what we have potentially, and can we afford that and how does that work fiscally? Another idea could be to put it in a different location and have it be larger, you know, indoor/outdoor type of facility, and then find out what type of revenue that can generate and then go from there. So, there's, you know, depending on the three various, three to four various options, we'll totally determine, you know, the size of it and what it entails.
But the underlying premise is that this is going to be self-supported by the Country Club.
Yeah.
And so, that's the, that is, that is one of the assumptions going into this, which is, as Jay's, that's why Jay was explaining about sort of the financial bill, feasibility and what's possible. It's, you know, the, the approach here is what can we afford to do?
Right.
Which I think is, is an important distinction to make.
And unfortunately, it may be that at the end of the day, we find out there's not many options, you know, but we need to go through this exercise to find that out, you know, and then also look at fundraising and CPC as different various routes also.
Yeah, a couple of questions. You know, I just wanted to make sure that the contract was responsive to the town meeting vote, and so I appreciate your explanation of the RFQ, and I guess their response to the RFQ as an addendum to our standard contract, and I'm, I'm making the assumption that that RFQ is responsive to what town meeting said it wanted. Sounds like it is, which is at least a look at repairing what we have as well as sort of citing potential for one or more new options, you know, sort of including the, all the bells and whistles that you'd need to cite something there, parking, right, all of that kind of stuff.
Yeah, all of that stuff's included, sure.
Would be included.
Fortunately, you know, we were able to take our CPC application and kind of use that as the template for the RFQ.
Okay. I, you know, I just wanted to make sure that what we're signing off on mirrors what town meeting voted for. And $75,000 all-in for this particular piece of the feasibility study, so we're not, at this stage, you have CPC funds, that's it, that, that's what this will cost.
That's correct, yeah.
Right? And so, you know, to that end, I note that in our standard contract, you know, there's this concept of reimbursable expenses for kind of, you know, ancillary costs associated with performing the contract. Roger, is there any sort of cap on that, or is there an industry standard for how much of the $75,000, for instance, gets spent on travel back and forth to the South Shore?
Well, what ends up happening would be perfectly candid, is when we, when we list, we have a couple of options on the Mass. General Law Chapter 7, but we can either set a not-to-exceed, or we can negotiate the fee based on what we agreed to. So, in certain instances, we find that it's most appropriate to set the not-to-exceed. So, when we receive, when we receive a response from the prospective designer, and they include those caveats about reimbursable expenses, the bottom line is the $75,000, they almost always come in at, you know, $74,999.
Right, right, right.
But going in, what we do is a fair amount of research to figure out what these other, other towns have spent, what it should cost, and the carrot on the stick, so to speak, is if the, for the prospective designers, if there's a project and they perform appropriately, we have the option by law to grant them the second part of the work, which is the larger sort of...
Design work?
Design work that they're hoping. But, but with respect to all those additional potential fees, the bottom line is, is a, is a lump sum of $75,000, and they need to make it work for $75,000.
Okay, and they need to, they need to deliver the product.
And give us the product, too.
Right, okay.
So, they can't have a lot of reimbursable expenses and not give us a product.
Okay.
Or, you know, on top of them, the, the board rejecting it, they likely wouldn't get any further business, which is something they probably want.
Right, okay.
So, one of the key parts is obviously trying to write an RFQ that's detailed enough to know what our expectations are. So, we, instead of them telling us what they think we need, we outline what we know we want. If there's anything that comes out of the interviews that informs the process a little better, where maybe there's something that, whether it's the prospective designer or another designer we interviewed said, hey, did you think about this? We'll then, at that point, make sure that they update their proposal to include what we might not have thought, thought of. I think we had a pretty detailed RFQ that included the financial component, the various locations, and then juxtaposing those two things, making sure we can afford what we're looking at.
Okay. And the owner-project manager, is that you? Or who is that? Is that the Country Club Committee?
Uh, well, that's a good question, actually. We, we talked about, Jay and I talked about, you know, how, you know, who was going to work with this group.
Right.
And I think one of the, not concerns, but one of the things we wanted to make sure is that it wasn't just a group that was, you know, just going to be no matter what supportive of the project. So, what, what Jay did, I think, talking to Jay, is that we probably need some other voices on the group. So, he reached out to, obviously, we have the South Shore Committee, Country Club Committee, but he also reached out to somebody like Jerry Sealan.
Yeah.
Who's willing to work with us. He's an architect and has actually helped the process to this point. And then Dan Coughlin has agreed to, you know, sit in a role similar to what the advisory committee does now and other boards.
I agree with him, yeah.
Ask tough questions, come back and be able to report in a way that is completely objective, and it kind of lends a little credence to the process, we thought. And then Tom and I will help with respect to, we've done this a few times, just helping, there was the fire department on their project or other projects, helping them work their way through the process, making sure that they get what they're supposed to get as part of the RF, the proposal and the RFQ response.
Okay. And when do, when does that, when would those discussions come back before us? Do we get involved as that process moves along? Do you report to us, or do you, is it at the end you report to us? How does that work?
I think that one thing we did want to do early on, and just to go off on a tangent just a little bit real briefly, is that we wanted to make sure that we, we've got a number of different groups. For example, there's one group working on Town Hall and its use.
Right.
Talk to them first, talk to our, sort of our own people first.
Right.
Understand what everyone else is doing before we start sending the consulting, consultant off in a direction that might require a change. Those changes come at a cost. They've, you know, I tell everyone in a polite way, you know, they're not running a soup kitchen, you know, when they're doing work, they need to get paid for, so we need to give them as much firm guidance as we can. So, we envision the process, we would do, sort of figure, get our own house in order, start the process, and then inform this board at some point where we've developed some worthy information. We've looked at these three sites before we go out, for example, and do boring, soil borings.
Right, 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 right.
At that point, we've honed in on one site. They're not going to do soil, it's not included in their proposal, do soil borings at four different locations.
Okay.
So, once we've honed in on one site, that, at that point, I think it would be important to come back to the board, say, yep, we've got support there as well, now we can do some of the, some of the other more substantial work.
I think some of the key parts that the board wanted is multiple options.
Correct.
And an iterative process so that you could opine at several stages, and Roger's created that with Jay and, and the committee.
Yeah, and I would just say, you know, two things on that, which is recognizing that this is fixed price and $75,000. You're going to have to be gatekeepers on the number of options. You don't, you don't have the ability to look at 12 sites and, and do different things. So, there's, there's going to be a balance that's involved there, but I would just echo a point Roger made, which is that, you know, before you go too far down this road, you know, in terms of the scope of your work and the scope of the effort, I'd particularly encourage you to reach out to the Town Hall Facility Study Committee, and, you know, just hypothetically, you know, you look at the Country Club, it's just such a great place, so if you're going to put a pool, if, if we're going to put a pool there, you know, would we want to, for example, explore the idea of adding a couple rooms to have a fitness center there or have some sort of recreation activities? That might alleviate some of the strain in this building. It might actually be a better fit for the customers of the Country Club. So, I would, I would ask you to just reach out and understand. We have, we had a resident in here a few weeks ago who said, you know, with all of these different expensive projects, how can I, as a taxpayer, be assured that you're looking for synergies where they're possible and where we're not duplicating work? So, because of where this is, we're going to ask you to reach out to that committee. And again, we are also mindful that this is a fixed-price, fixed-scope agreement, so we, we want to strike the right balance of, of exploring options and staying true to the mission of what town meeting approved back in April.
Will do.
Yeah. Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, if not, would somebody like to make a motion?
Sure.
A move that we enter into a contract with...
BHA.
Bargum Hendry, Archetype Inc., also known as BHA, thank you, Ted, to assist the South Shore Country Club with the feasibility study for a potential swimming pool complex at their site.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for coming in.
Thank you guys for your support.
It's exciting.
Roger, can you just, we have, Roger, if you could just stay at the table for a, a minute? We have a vote that we need to take...
Oh, yeah, we're going to go embarrass.
...tonight that concerns you, so we thought maybe we would do that right now. Ted, would you want to just speak to this, this call?
Um, well, Roger's agreed to continue working for the town. I, I couldn't be happier. You should be extremely happy. As you mentioned, clerk of the works, I think he's the clerk of the works on all the jobs we have. I can't tell you how much money that saved us. It's been a pleasure to work with him all these years, and I'm really excited that he's agreed to stay with us.
Anything to add?
I couldn't agree more.
I, I do as well. I mean, I, we, you heard from what Mary just said, what you've shared with us. I mean, we have a lot going on, so we're, we're looking forward to working with you over the next several years, and we appreciate your willingness to step up.
Thank you. Well, I want to extend my thanks to the board and the town administrator, and it's, it's hard to believe, but it's been 13 years, and a lot's transpired in this little town in 13 years, and it's amazing how much stuff we do. I have a town of 22,000 people, but, but I look forward to the next three and all the challenges that come as a result, so, and, and exciting opportunities as well. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You know, Roger, you've done such great work, and as we look ahead to these projects, you're going to be such an important part of it all, so, you know, I think, speaking for the town, we're just, we're just delighted that you're going to play a significant role in these projects, and we just thank you for, for all the great work that you do.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So, I'd like to make a motion to sign an employment agreement with Roger Fernandez, Town Engineer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have four police patrolman interviews, and we will be interviewing three new recruits and one candidate who is a potential lateral transfer from another town. The Police Department has a hiring process that they use that is, is very rigorous, and it culminates with interviews in front of this board. We're going to be speaking with each of the candidates for about 10 or 15 minutes. Paul Karen and I will each ask the candidates some questions. We're going in, it looks like, well, we're not going in any sort of alphabetical order, but we're going in order as it appears on the agenda. Upon conclusion of the four interviews, we'll ask the chief to come up and give recommendations for potential hiring decisions for this evening. So, chief, did I miss anything before we...
I didn't hear all.
Okay, so, our first candidate is Christopher Lobianco. Hey, how are you? Karen Johnson. Mary Power, nice to meet you.
Nice to see you.
Would you like to take a seat?
Welcome. Yeah?
Would anybody like a copy of my resume before we begin?
We have it, but thank you for bringing extra copies.
If you give me one, I'll pass one down to Selectman Healy.
Absolutely.
Do you prefer Christopher or Chris?
Chris is fine, thank you.
Okay, Chris, welcome. The format, we're going to ask you to just introduce yourself to the board and to the viewing audience, a little bit about your background and your interest. The three of us will ask, ask you a couple of questions, and then we'll give you the opportunity to make any sort of closing comments if you'd like. So, if you could please just introduce yourself to the town and tell us why you'd like to be a police officer.
Absolutely. So, for those of you who don't know me, my name's Christopher Lobianco. I would describe myself as someone that's detail-oriented, compassionate, and someone that is incredibly devoted towards police work. I've always had a desire to do something in the civil service field. I think both the combination of my school experience as well as my work experience has prepared me for that. I graduated from Bridgewater State with a degree in criminal justice and a minor in psychology, and I did that while working full-time for Cork Auto Dealers, where I'm currently a department manager. I originally began looking into more towards the military field, and then as I developed my skills and realized that I wanted to be involved in the community that I lived in, I focused myself towards police work. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, would you like to maybe lead off?
Sure, sure. Mr. Lobianco, good evening, how are you tonight?
Good, yourself?
I'm well. Looks like you know how to fight, huh?
I've, I've been around.
Yeah? What do you think the most important weapon in the arsenal of a police officer is?
I would say compassion, no, hands down. I mean, being able to diffuse a situation and understand that every person that you encounter has their own personality, experiences, you know, family, and so on and so forth, is critical, and, and being able to handle every situation correctly and accurately and to the best of my ability.
What would you consider the three most important qualities that a good police officer needs to possess?
Absolutely, I would, I would say attention to detail first and foremost. I believe that being able to do your job a hundred percent correctly is first and foremost a big deal. I believe that compassion, obviously, as I expressed a minute ago, is huge, in my opinion. And I would say professionalism is a huge thing, in my opinion. A lot of, a big thing, in my opinion, is understanding that as a police officer, you're a police officer twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five, whether you're in the uniform or, or out, and when you're dealing with the community and, and talking with people, whether it be at a grocery store or on a traffic stop, it's important that you understand that you represent the department and your actions speak for the department.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Karen?
Yes, thanks for coming in tonight, Mr. Lobianco.
You're having me.
Question for you is, if you can think about a challenge or an experience in your life that's helped to sort of shape who you are today, defines who you are today, could you share something like that with us?
Absolutely. So to give you a little bit of background in, in my work experience, I deal with all the paperwork for the service departments, and I deal a lot with money and overseas customers. For example, Kia is one. They obviously are based in Korea, and I have to deal with them and understand them. And I think one of the biggest challenges has been overcoming culture gaps and such, and being able to interact with people that are very different from yourself and, and be able to devise solutions to, to problems that you may not have anticipated existed, such as, one of the things they said to me was that, you know, they didn't really understand why somebody in the United States may buy a car just because they liked the way it looks, or so on and so forth, you know? They're really value-based on, as far as like, you know, price or, you know, different features and, and so on. And so I think that through my work experience, I've gained an ability to deal with a lot of different people, and, and that's really been valuable to me.
Yeah, great skill to bring to the police, police department, for sure.
Absolutely.
And then my, my other question is, so I had the opportunity to participate in the Citizens Police Academy that Hingham's been running for a long time. I participated this fall, and it was a really tremendous, tremendous experience for me. And it gave me a glimpse of the importance of community policing. I wondered if you could maybe share your view on, on the role of community policing as, as part of your job.
Absolutely. Community policing, in my opinion, is critical, and there, in my mind, there are two different facets of it. One, you have various different programs and so on and so forth, one being the Citizens Police Academy. You know, we have the resource officer at the high school, we have, you know, house checks and so on, and that's a big part of isolating certain groups of the community and interacting with them. I think it also comes down to, on a daily level, as I touched before, every time you interact with somebody, it's community policing, getting to know people, getting them to trust you. It's a huge deal if they know, you know, Chris is at the Hingham Police Department. If I see something abnormal, I, I can talk to him, he, I look at him as a, as a human, as a, you know, more than just a, a person in a uniform, then building the trust of people is critical.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lobianco. Two, two questions. First, you've talked a little bit about, about communication and communication skills. I'm, I'm wondering what, you know, throughout your career, what have you done to try to develop and improve your communication skills?
Absolutely. So on a academic standpoint, I've taken numerous public speaking courses and, you know, different cultural classes to understand different people's views and so on. And then from work, I've had the ability to really look up to a number of mentors that have really guided me towards, you know, how to interact with different people, and really, a, a big part of it is, is just being thrown in the scenario and, and adapting to the situation. I mean, it's, it's tough to say, you know, when you, when you talk to different people every day, it's, it's a different scenario every single time. And I really just feel honestly, just being thrown into the fire at work and having to deal with, you know, whether it be customers or different departments or manufacturers and so on and so forth, it's, it's always a different task, and I feel that, that's really given me a, a great boost in that department.
Yeah, thank you. And final question, as, as you think back on your life, your career, is there anyone who, you know, jumps out to you as being a role model, and, and what is it about that person that, that has you think about them in that way?
Well, I would say I really have like two, two major ones. My, my current boss has, has helped mentor me through, you know, numerous, numerous different circumstances. He's given me a number of opportunities to prove myself and, and really excel in my field. And a second would be my brother, he's currently employed on the Hingham Police Department. He's really the, we've always had kind of like a brotherly competition. You know, he always wants to be there first, and I always want to do it the best. So it kind of like pushes each other to, you know, compete and, and become the best at everything, so that, that's really, really helped me big time.
Thank you. Just before we conclude, do you have any questions for us, or is there anything else that, that you'd like to mention that we haven't asked?
I guess a, a question I would have for you guys is, as you've seen, you know, as police departments develop and, and change over time, what do you guys find to be the most critical area of a police department, the, the most critical function?
I'll wait for the expert to say.
You know, Mr. Lobianco, I think it's a universal truth that the essential quality of the police force remains unchanged. You have to be credible, you have to tell the truth, and you have to be honest to a fault. I don't care if you were a police officer here fifty years ago or one tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
That, to me, is the thing that stays.
Absolutely.
I was, I was going to say integrity, but to just add to that, to me, a lot of it is your observation and your listening skills. I think sometimes when we think about communication and things, we, we think about us doing the talking or us doing it, but in a lot of cases, being observant and listening and picking up the cues, in my mind, is extremely important for a police officer because you have to make judgment calls all the time.
Right.
And in many of those cases, you're making them by yourself.
Mm-hmm.
And so you have to rely on, you have to rely on all of your senses.
And I'd just say, sort of following on to all of that, is a commitment to keep learning, you know, keep learning about yourself, keep learning about the department, keep learning about the, the changes in technology and weaponry, you know, there's sort of the technical set that goes along with the heart and soul, and I think all, all of those elements are essential for a Hingham police officer.
Yeah, well, you want to know the Fourth Amendment?
Yeah.
Know the Fourth Amendment.
Absolutely.
Serious.
Mr. Lobianco, thank you so much.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Ms. Jana Perez.
Well, you know, I was trying to watch, I'm pretty sure you didn't take a drink of the water, so I don't have to get a little.
We can go to the, we can go to the instant replay.
If I'm wrong, that would really be nice.
Perez, welcome.
Nice to meet you.
Second top tonight? Nice to see you.
Mary Power, welcome.
Hi, Paul Healy.
Would you like to take a seat in the chair next to Mr. Alexiatus? Great, thank you so much.
We'll share, we'll get chairs.
Ms. Perez, we're going to start out and ask you to maybe just introduce yourself to us, to the viewing audience, tell us a little bit about yourself, why you're interested in the position. My colleagues and I then will ask you some questions, and then at the conclusion, we'll give you an opportunity, if there are any closing comments or questions that you have. So that's, that's how this will go.
Okay.
So the floor is yours.
All right, so my name is Jana Perez. I grew up in the North Shore of Massachusetts, so I came from Everett. I am a mother to a soon-to-be four-year-old, and that's like the joy of my life. Been in retail for about twelve years, and most in a management capacity, supervisor, hire, so leading people has been great. The reason I want to be a police officer is my father was a Mass State Trooper, my mother was a lieutenant for the DOC, and she retired out of Walpole. Both my siblings are also in the Department of Corrections, and it was very rewarding to see my father and the passion he had for the job. It was very inspirational. Every day, he said, it was the greatest, the greatest thing in the world, and so wanted to follow in his footsteps.
Thank you.
Sure.
Karen, would you like to maybe lead off with a few questions?
Yeah, first one, Ms. Perez, is, is about you. I'd like to know if there's a, a particular challenge in your life or an experience that you feel has shaped you or defined you as you sit before us today?
Losing my father, I'd say is probably one of the biggest things. He was the biggest motivating factor in my life. Just an overall hard worker, and having to get over that loss, not having that person to talk to, was probably one of the biggest things.
But also brings you to the table today with us, I think.
It does, absolutely. Keep them with me.
And then more on the sort of department end of things, I participated in the Citizens Police Academy this fall, so I got a little bit of a glimpse at sort of the programmatic community policing that the Hingham Police Department's done for a long time. And it's a tremendous opportunity for folks in the community to get to know the police and to understand the varied sort of tasks that they undertake every day. So I was wondering if you had some, some concept of how community policing might, might build into your professional role as a Hingham police officer?
I never gone through the program myself, so I'm not a hundred percent sure. All I know is from the stuff that I went through with my dad, and some of the experiences that he shared with me, and some of the stuff my mom's gone through, so I don't really have a lot of experience as far as.
I guess I'm just wondering, sort of more generally, what do you think about, if someone says to you, you know, community policing, what, what does that mean to you?
That means accountability, peer-to-peer accountability, for the most part, making sure that everyone's doing everything that they're supposed to be doing, and just holding the town responsible for each other, and I think that's hugely important.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening, Ms. Perez.
Good evening.
Following up on the theme of your father, as, as well as your mother, and I do this only because they're both in law enforcement in various capacities, but what, what were the qualities that they imparted to you with respect to their work as either a police officer or a correctional officer within the walls of Walpole?
So one of the biggest things for me was my father always said that you have to be fair and consistent, leading with integrity. You know, he never believed in doing anything that was out of line. He was very hardworking and very dedicated, and so seeing those things were, were instrumental. As well as wanting to grow, my mother started off being a single mom, a, a, just a, at-home mom with three kids, and joined the Department of Corrections and didn't just want to be an officer, she wanted to exceed and excel throughout the department, and, and did, and that was her goal. She said, I will not retire until I become a lieutenant. So having that work ethic and seeing that being instilled and ingrained in her, and my father becoming a sergeant, was very important for me as well.
What would you consider the three most important qualities that you would have to have under any circumstance as a police officer in the town of Hingham?
I would say integrity, leadership, and accountability.
Thank you.
As, as you think back on a lot of your experience, can you think of a situation that, you know, where, you know, you've talked about some qualities that are important for, to be a police officer, accountability, leadership, integrity? In your, in your own career so far, can you think of a situation or of an example of when you, when you've demonstrated one of those qualities?
Absolutely. I have to demonstrate both, all of them, every on a day-to-day basis. For me, in my position, it's very important that I lead by example, making sure that anything that I ask of the people who are working with me and for me, know that I'm willing to do the same job that they are, and that I'm as passionate about it as, as they should be, and that I hold myself to a high standard. So making sure that I am being a strong leader, that I'm being a consistent leader, that everything that I'm doing is with integrity and within the policy and procedures, and, you know, completing everything to the best of, of my ability. So those things are, on a day-to-day basis, something that I try to, try to live by.
Thank you. And my final question, communication skills are really important
Absolutely.
In a police officer. Can you talk about how you've, how you've developed your communication skills and how, and how you see those helping you, should you join the Hingham Police Department?
Absolutely. High school, I loved English, reading, writing, proper grammar, punctuation were things I always loved. Didn't like making spelling errors, and Dad didn't like it either, so, you know, that was something that was important. I do a lot of report writing, I used to have to do a lot of planning for previous employers, so making sure that those plans were specific, concise, and direct, so that they were easily understood by anyone who would be reading them, so making sure those were good. We also had to do a lot of financial planning, so making sure that those numbers all matched up and that everything was consistent. We also had to write reports if there were any incidents in the store involving any of our associates or our customers, so we had to make sure that those, those forms were filled out completely with, you know, detail, and to make sure that those were consistent. I had a lot of training from a lot of the other managers, and I think because of the stuff that I received with my training with the other, supportive of the other managers, I was appointed as one of the district leaders and trainers for one of my previous employers. So having to clear communication, clear goals, clear expectations was something that was extremely important.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Ms. Perez, before we conclude, do you have any questions for the board, or is there any other information that you'd like to share with us?
I have no questions. I would like to say thank you for your time, I appreciate it. This is something I'm very passionate about, and that's really all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We've enjoyed meeting you this evening.
Thank you so much.
For coming in.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Our next candidate is Mr. Daniel Goldstein.
Hey, how are you? Karen Johnson, pleased to see you.
Mary Power, welcome.
Mr. Goldstein, how are you, sir?
Would you like to take a seat, please, at the far end of the table? Mr. Goldstein, tonight, we're going to start by asking you to just tell us a little bit about you, about your background, about why you're interested in becoming a police, a police officer. Then the three of us will take turns asking you some questions, and then at the conclusion, we'll give you an opportunity, if you have any questions for the board or any final comments that you'd like to make. So with that, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Good evening, my name's Daniel Goldstein, I'm twenty-four years old, was born and raised here in Hingham. I have identical twin brother, who is also pursuing a career in law enforcement, and a sister who is, an older sister, who's a nurse at Children's Hospital in Boston. In the past few years, I've been going to school part-time at UMass Boston, pursuing a degree in criminal justice. I work as an assistant harbor master for the town of Hingham, as well as a jailer for the police department, and excited to be here.
Well, terrific, we're glad you're here. Paul, would you like to start?
Sure. Mr. Goldstein, as someone who's born and raised here, you, you've seen, I take it, the positive sides of the town?
Yes, sir.
How, how would you use that experience going forward, seeing some of the parts of town that aren't so positive?
You know, I can work hard in, you know, community policing, you know, building relationships with the community, gaining trust in people to work, and work with me to help make those, whatever problem. with me to, um, help make those, um, whatever problems there may be in certain areas of the town better.
What would you say the, uh, the, the three most non-negotiable traits that you would need to possess to be an effective police officer in the town of Hingham?
Um, you'd have to have good ethics and integrity, um, be humble, be honest.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Goldstein, um, so I want to talk a little bit about you. I'm wondering, um, if you could share with us a challenge or experience, um, that you've had in your life to date that sort of shaped who you are and, and maybe helps define who you are today?
Um, maybe a good challenge would be, um, you know, growing up, um, I've always lived with my grandparents in, in an apartment, and I have a Down Syndrome uncle, and, um, you know, growing up, always helping them, uh, with whatever they need has really, um, you know, shaped me into the person I am today.
Built compassion and, yeah, empathy for folks.
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and, and you mentioned, um, community policing, you know, I, I, I think it's one of the most important, not one of the most important, one of, one of the important things that, that the Hingham Police Department does. I think they do a good job, both sort of programmatically and informally, and you touched on community policing. I wonder if you could maybe expand on what your view of community policing is?
Well, then, needs to be, uh, trust between the community and the police department. If there's no trust, then they're not, the community's not going to want to work with the police department. And I believe it was Sir Robert Peel of the London Metropolitan Police Department who said, "We, as in the police, are the community, and the community are the police." So, that, that really hits home in community policing.
And so, you know, I guess, would you use that in the way you carry yourself and the programs you participate in? How, how do you put that into practice?
Um, well, you know, just building good relationships with people in the community, um, and, you know, working hard to keep those relationships.
Thank you.
Um, as you think about, um, as you think about your life, uh, have there been any role models that you've had, and who, you know, who was that, and why, why did they stand out to you as, as a role model?
Absolutely. Um, one of my role models is actually a Hingham police officer. His name's Jeremiah Sullivan, and he was my freshman year lacrosse coach. Um, and during that time, he was finishing up his studies and, uh, going through the academy, as well as coaching our team, and I could see how passionate he was and how much he cared about helping out others and helping our team, um, and it really made an impact on me and, uh, confirmed my desire to work in law enforcement.
Thank you. And, um, my final question, police officers, um, deal with stressful situations on a daily basis. Um, could you maybe give an example of a stressful situation that you've encountered professionally, and, um, you know, what, what made it stressful and, and how did you deal with it?
Um, this is a situation that I can think about. Um, it was, I used to carpool to the Plymouth Police Academy with a fellow classmate, and we were meeting at, we were, our meeting spot was at the town harbor, and the, as we pulled in one night, we noticed there was a car teetering on the seawall edge, and, um, I knew right away that something was wrong. So, my brother and I immediately got out of the car and went over to the seawall, and, um, we saw this lady who was trying to jump, jump into the water, and immediately, um, you know, I called 911 and let them know what was going on, and, um, we, all of a sudden, without even thinking, our, our, our skills from, in the, uh, the police academy just kicked in, and we used de-escalation skills to try to get her away from the seawall, bring her back, um, in, away, up by the seahorse, so she wasn't near the wall, and kind of talked her, calm her down, and, uh, that was definitely a stressful situation, um, that I encountered, but we were able to get her help, and, and Fire Department did arrive, and she, she turned out to be okay.
Thank you. Um, before we conclude, do you have any questions for this board, or is there any other information that you'd like this board to be aware of?
Um, no, I don't have any other questions at this time. I'd just like to thank you all for, uh, the time and consideration and allowing me to be here for this opportunity, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your work for the town, as both an, you know, especially being an assistant harbor master. It's, um...
It's a busy time.
Very important work, and it is. It's a busy time of year. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Our next candidate is Mr. Brian Fernandez. Mary Power, welcome. Mr. Fernandez, if you'd like to take a seat right over here, welcome.
Thank you.
Um, this evening, um, the way we'll conduct this interview, we'll ask you to, um, introduce yourself to us in the viewing audience. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay.
Um, why you're interested in, um, moving to, in, moving over to the Hingham Police Force, and, um, my colleagues and I will ask some questions, and then at the conclusion, you'll have an opportunity to make any final comments or ask any questions of us.
Okay.
And I should mention for, for the, uh, audience, that, um, Mr. Fernandez is actually applying as a lateral transfer, so he is actually a police, a police officer right now, so maybe that's a good place for you to start.
Okay. Uh, my name is Brian Fernandez. Um, I've been with the Sandwich Police Department for almost six years now, um, and I'm looking to transfer to the Hingham Police Department because my family is from the area, my friends are from the area. I spend most of my time up in this area. Um, I'm looking to move up here. I love this area. I think it's a great place to be, um, and I know many people on the department, and they have nothing but good things to say about the department and the town, and, you know, I just thought it was a great opportunity, and I would try to take advantage of it.
Thank you. Karen, do you want to?
Sure. Mr. Fernandez, thanks for being with us tonight. Um, one thing I'd like to understand is maybe a little bit more about you, so I'm wondering if you could share, um, a challenge or experience in your life that's helped shape you, helped, perhaps helped shape your view of, uh, of law enforcement and your, your view of being a police officer?
Okay. Um, one thing that actually really stood out to me was when I was younger. Um, my grandfather was actually a chief of police in three different towns, and when he passed away, um, I was pretty young. I was in maybe fifth grade, but I remember at his funeral, that was like my first, you know, imprint on me of this profession, was how many people from departments from all over the state showed up to his funeral, and it just really impressed me and, you know, really made me kind of want to go into this job.
Yeah, that must have been pretty amazing.
Yeah.
Um, and then more on the sort of programmatic side. I don't know what, what Sandwich does in terms of community policing, but I, I, you know, I, I think it's an important component of what the Hingham Police Department does and what each Hingham police officer does, and I would just like your, your views about, about how you see community policing.
I think it's probably one of the most important things that we do now. Um, they do a pretty good job with it in Sandwich. Um, I think that, you know, one of the things that you should do during your shift is to get out and interact with the community, um, just because, you know, the perception of us right now can kind of be up and down with some people, and I think that the more interaction you have with people, the more they see, you know, what we're about and who we are, and maybe can understand a little bit more what we do.
Thank you.
Paul?
No, Officer, um, good evening.
Thank you.
Um, the chief I started with said you're a rookie until you have at least five years on the job. You're not a rookie, right?
No, sir.
You've, you've got habits that are baked in right now, right?
Probably is.
And I would assume that you'd be coming on to a department where you'd start at the bottom and work up?
Yes.
Is that something that you're ready to?
I think it is. I, I, I knew what I was getting into when I started this whole process, so, you know, I kind of fully expect, you know, go right down to the bottom, be, you know, learning everything I can, and, you know, everything, everything I had in Sandwich, basically, is, is in the past, and, you know, I'm just looking to start over and make myself, make, make my name here in this department.
Have you worked the midnight shift?
I have.
Oh.
Um, I worked as a seasonal cop in Hull for, like, three and a half years on the midnight shift in the summertime, and then my first two or three, two and a half years that I get in Sandwich were on the midnights.
And what are you now, four to twelve?
I'm on days now.
Okay. How big's Sandwich?
Sandwich land-wise is about forty, forty-four square miles.
Department?
A lot of it's on the base, but the department is, um, thirty-six, I think, from top to bottom.
In your mind, what are the three most important qualities a police officer has to have regardless of the town they, or city that they work in?
Um, I think the first quality would be integrity, um, reliability, and, um, dependability.
Your chief's on board with you making the move?
He is. He was very good about it, actually.
Thank you, sir.
Um, Mr. Fernandez, two questions. Um, as you think about your career in Sandwich, is there a particularly, is there a situation that stands out in your mind as, that was stressful? What was it? Um, how did you handle it?
Um, there's many. Um, actually, one happened since I had my interview with the panel. Um, about a week and a half ago, I had a, um, call for a wife and her youngest son who had found her, um, husband hanging in the bathroom.
God.
So, I went up and, you know, had to deal with that and deal with the family, and, you know, they weren't obviously in a good place at the time, so, um, just things like that, but that's a recent one that stands out in my mind.
And, and what skills did you most draw on in that, in that situation?
Um, I think you have to be able to fluctuate. I mean, when you first get there, you have to kind of assess what's happening, um, go up, um, deal with what you have there, and then afterwards, um, you know, you have to deal with the family, so you have to have compassion, you have to, you know, have understanding. Um, so you have to be able to kind of flip that switch from going from, "Okay, I need to get the job done," to, "Okay, I need to step back and help these people deal with what they have going on right now."
Thank you. And, um, uh, as you think back on, on your time as a police officer, was there anything about the job that was a surprise from when you went into it?
The amount of reports.
[laughing]
It was a little, a little more than I thought, but now, six years in, I'm, I'm pretty used to it, so, yeah.
Yep. Um, and, uh, one, one final question, as you think about role models in your life, who stands out? Why?
Like I said earlier, I mean, my grandfather was a very important, he, he did pass away when I was young, but, um, I just, I spent a lot of time with him, and, you know, I tried to learn from him, and I thought he was a great man, and again, he's why I kind of wanted to go into this job, so I would say that my grandfather.
Thank you. Um, do you have any questions for, for us, or are the, is there anything else that you wanted to make sure that, uh, that you shared with us?
Can't think of anything right now, but...
Okay. Um, wait, one more?
Have you taken a sergeant's exam yet?
I have.
What'd you do?
I, did. We just pulled out of the civil service for our sergeants, so the written test, it was, uh, one portion, and then we did an assessment center. I passed the written, but I came in last place. The assessment center, I came in number one, so it was kind of fluctuated, yeah.
Okay, good.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, please, Chief, have a seat. Which do you prefer? I think they're coming in. They're coming in. Chief, um, just before, before you share a recommendation, I just wondered if you could briefly, for the benefit of the audience, um, you know, as someone in, in my paid job, I'm an HR professional, and, um, I'm involved with a lot of hiring and selection processes, and I know when I first came onto the board, I was so impressed with the, um, with the hiring process that's used by the police department, and I just wondered, because the audience really is seeing, you know, fifteen minutes of interviews by this board, but there's a whole lot of other stuff that goes on leading up to it. Could you just describe, um, what's taken place, and then, if you could, please, your recommendations?
Sure. Um, the process for the police department, first of all, starts out probably close to two years ago for the candidates. Um, they all have to take a civil service test, and, um, based on the scoring on the civil service test, they're placed on a list. And when we choose to hire a person, we go to civil service, and we get a group of candidates that are eligible for the job. Um, then, when we do that, then we start what we call as our intake process. Um, there's several lengthy forms that they're required to fill out. Um, they're assigned a, a, a background investigator, um, and they start, that's their point of contact with the police department. All those forms, um, are necessary to fill it, to fill in. They have deadlines to turn that paperwork in, uh, and to make sure that everything's accurate, and as they go through that, it's also verified by those investigators, because one of the things we're looking for is the quality to be able to do things in a timely fashion. Um, it's a, it's sort of a lot of work, and, but you do have to stick to the, to the timelines and get that stuff in, because, uh, we know as a police officer, that's an important task at hand that we're looking for. After they, uh, have turned all the paperworks in, uh, we start them on physical tests, uh, and we also do a drug testing portion of the test. Uh, and then as we continue to proceed through, um, there's another background investigation that's being done on outside contacts, work employees, and one of the things that we felt during our process of this is that we, the background investigators keep this to themselves. They don't share it with the other officers because we don't want anyone swaying. We're, we're trying to make a, a system that's very, uh, fair and non-biased. The scoring and the interview panel we set up is, uh, we consist of five officers, rated officers. This interview panel, we had three from Hingham, um, a sergeant from Situette, and a lieutenant from Cohasset, and that's something we've started doing over the last couple, uh, times we've done this, because we feel it brings in, um, outside opinions from, you're just not looking at your own department skills. You're, you're looking for more, um, opinions, and it also avoids some of the internal talking that may go on, that, uh, and familiarity. Um, there's about a series of, um, it's taken from the California Police Officers Exam. There's a series of, um, probably about forty questions they go through. The, during that interview process, the deputy chief and myself sit in. We don't rate them, but we just sit in, and, um, we are entitled to ask some questions if it's related to a question that was asked, or for clarification. The, uh, the, uh, background investigator also sits in, so if there's anything that, um, was to be out of line, or a statement that was made that was untrue, or something like that, they could later tell the panel that this wasn't consistent with the background information. Um, and then basically, um, the deputy and I buy them pizzas, and about five or six later, uh, six hours later, the panel goes through a, a scoring process, um, where they break down all the exams and come up with an overall score that's been presented to you, um, and they also do a write-up on their opinions.
Thank you. Um, so you have a recommendation for the board?
Um, yes, I do, and I'd like to say, I, I just, um, one of the great things about being a police, uh, being the chief of this department and working in the town of Hingham is that, um, we have a great candidate of, we have great candidates looking to become Hingham police officers. Um, we're very fortunate. We have a great department because we've been able to recruit people that are all high-quality candidates. The tougher part comes down is when you can only hire two, and there's three people looking for the job, so, um, I'd like to start off first, I think, with the, um, lateral position, just, uh, my recommendation on that. Um, that the Hingham Police Department had the opportunity to conduct the preliminary, preliminary interviews with Officer Brian Fernandez. Um, he's gone through the background. I have spoken personally with Chief Wack of the Sandwich Police Department, and he had all positive, uh, recommendations for Officer Fernandez. Um, he actually would be, uh, sort of will miss him, and, um, it was sad to see him go, but he realizes and believes in officers pursuing what makes them happy and in an environment that they'll be happy. Um, he's also agreeable to, uh, to sign off on the lateral transfer, which is required by civil service. Um, Detective O'Shea, um, conducted the background checks and, um, received all positive reports, uh, from all his current supervisors in Situette, uh, Sandwich, and also the previously, uh, from his supervisors in the Hull Police Department. Uh, he's clearly demonstrated his commitment to community policing and has been involved in community-sponsored programs in Situette. Uh, he continues to improve his knowledge. He recently earned his master's degree, um, and is taking advantage of training opportunities, uh, while employed with Sandwich. He's serving as the field training officer, uh, which is a very important role for the future development of new officers. Um, he's demonstrated a good work ethic and follow-through of assignments. Um, and I think something that, one thing I probably did ask is that he realizes this is a twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five-days-a-year job, and he's willing to work long hours, weekends, and holidays. That's a crucial thing for me. Um, based on the results of the background checks and recommendations, I'm highly confident that Officer Fernandez would be a great addition... and he's willing to work long hours, weekends, and holidays. That's a crucial thing for me. Based on the results of the background checks and recommendations, I'm highly confident that Officer Fernandez would be a great addition to the Hingham Police Department, and I would recommend the Board of Selectmen make a conditional offer of employment.
Paula Karen, anything to add?
What's the conditional offer of employment?
It's standard for all the, all the employers. You'll see in your vote.
Does Officer Fernandez have to go through the academy?
No, he's, one of the advantages of using lateral transfers is that they're currently trained. They'll come to the police department, and they're basically ready to work at that point. And we just have to put them through our own series of educational to teach them about the town of Hingham. We're fortunate that he does have some background and work locally in Hull, so he is familiar with the area. So this provides us with a great opportunity to basically get someone immediately out there with experience on the job.
And so the condition is conditioned on Officer Fernandez's satisfactory completing your training, your piece of training?
Yeah, the condition would also be the sign-off from the chief of Sandwich, or it would actually come from the Board of Selectmen. In their town, I believe, or the town manager, I think.
As you can see, the lateral conditional offer is a little different than the offer for the non-laterals. They have to go through a slightly more rigorous structure.
I have a comment.
Please.
Ordinarily, I'm a little, I like it when our officers are homegrown, to be candid, because I think that they train and that their experience is derived from the culture of the department. And I respect the fact that every department has a different culture. But notwithstanding that hesitation, I think we have an immediate need for an experienced officer due to the recent loss of an experienced officer. So I understand and I respect the rationale you've applied here in this search. I like the fact that Officer Fernandez has obtained a master's degree. I think that that shows drive. And I like a, I like a gung-ho PO. So coupled with the field training officer status, that tells me that his department has confidence in his ability to raise and mentor younger officers as well. So there's a lot of good qualities that you have there, officer, and you're a credit to the uniform. So that's, that's my statement.
Would someone like to make a motion?
If I could, I would like to. Thank you. It's with pleasure that I would like to move to extend a conditional offer of employment to Officer Fernandez. And if you give me a moment, I'll get his first name. Brian Fernandez. As a permanent police officer for the town of Hingham.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Officer Fernandez, welcome. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Chief?
I just would like to pick up what Selectmen Healy said. That was a conversation that Deputy Chief Jones and I had as well. And perhaps it's a sign of age, maybe, but I was, sort of when we're looking at laterals, I do sort of set a limit of like the five-year limit. I'm looking for officers that are younger and can adapt to the way that we do things. So very confident that he'll be a great police officer.
Good to hear.
Regarding the police recruit candidates, we've been engaged in the hiring process to fill the two vacant patrol officer positions. We realize the importance of making a decision like this. We've gone through the process that we use to hire, and I think it's a very extensive and a very fair process. We're very fortunate that we have such a fine pool of candidates to choose from. I'm in agreement with the interview board's evaluations. And I would like to recommend the following two candidates for conditional offer of employment. Jenna Perez, Ms. Perez was a unanimous top choice of the interview panel, and I'm in total agreement with her decision. I was very impressed with her life and her work experience. Ms. Perez shows, showed throughout the process that she encompassed a concept of teamwork and was able to demonstrate through her answers during some of the, during that, during some of the responses. Many of the responses that she had were responses that I would expect out of a seasoned police officer. She has a grasp on the cultural diversity and how it applies to modern-day policing. And I believe that Ms. Perez will be able to bring her experiences to her job and also share them with her fellow officers. I strongly believe that she will be a welcome addition to the Hingham Police Department, and I look forward to working with her in the future. The second choice is Christopher Lobianco. Mr. Lobianco was scored second by the interview panel. Mr. Lobianco displayed an enthusiasm and confidence during the interview, which makes you notice his presence. He expresses strong community values and realizes that an officer's success is determined by his interactions with the community. He is well-versed in the team concept and in his position as a current, in his current job. He was able to give examples of challenges he has overcome to achieve that, those goals. I feel that Mr. Lobianco has the skillset needed to be a productive member of the department. The police academy will help broaden and refine his current skillsets. I look forward to seeing Mr. Lobianco develop into an outstanding officer for the Hingham Police Department.
Comments from my colleagues?
If I could.
Please.
I was sharing with Sharon Profetti my own experience interviewing for a position on the Hingham Police Department years ago. And I have to say that today's experience is considerably different than the one I underwent. And there's a certain frustration that I have, because I sit here for 10 minutes and I throw a couple of questions out. It's extraordinarily difficult for me to get a sense of what you, men and women, are in that time. So I have to, out of necessity, rely on the assessments and the evaluations of the offices of the department, as well as those that assist you from other departments, as well as your own judgment, chief. You know, I serve with the chief, your future boss, and I have great respect for his recommendations. But notwithstanding that, I still have my own opinions. And I look forward to Ms. Perez and Mr. Lobianco joining us. I think you both bring skills and qualities that are going to enhance the department. And Mr. Goldstein, I was very impressed with you, sir. I wish we had three openings right now, I truly do. But we don't. So, you know, I'd support the chief's recommendation and I'd be prepared to offer a motion to that effect.
I thought this was an incredibly hard process. It was a process that I'm new, so it was a process that I undertook with great sincerity. I appreciate the chief and the deputy chief spending time with me to review the three of you, as well as Mr. Fernandez. I think this is one of the most important things that the Board of Selectmen does. You know, our, our police department is integral to this, the safety and well-being of this town. And, you know, I appreciate that responsibility greatly. Like my colleague, I spent a great deal of time with the paperwork that was assembled for each of your files. So, you know, I don't want you to think these, these decisions tonight were based on, on your answers, although I did appreciate the opportunity to talk with you individually and to hear your responses and to meet you. I too support the offer to Ms. Perez and Mr. Lobianco, but I will say, Mr. Goldstein, that, you know, I thought your file was very strong. And, you know, I hope I see you sitting down the, down the row from me again very soon.
I would, I would echo what both of my colleagues said. As I said before, I think this process, I'm very impressed with the process. And that makes it easier for me to read the reports and the recommendations. I also sat with the chief and the deputy for probably about two hours last week, going through all of, going through all of the information about all of you, going through the process. I, and it's also very nice to meet you and, you know, to, these interviews, to me, kind of help, you know, give us an opportunity to, to validate what we've seen. I'll join my colleagues and, you know, Ms. Perez and Mr. Lobianco. We, we welcome you to the police department. We look forward to you getting into the academy and, and coming, you know, coming to join the force. Mr. Goldstein, please stick with us. If, if there were three, if there were three positions, there would be three votes tonight. And I've, I've had the honor of sitting on this board for a little more than two years. And in that time, I think we've hired about eight police officers. And, and so I would encourage that. And I would also encourage you to come in and see the chief and the deputy next week and talk about, you know, you've, you've got a commitment in this community. You do very important work in the police department and in the Harbor Masters office. And, you know, have a conversation about, about how you can build and be even better positioned for when we will be doing this again. And while it's difficult to not hire three people tonight, I take comfort in knowing that, that we do this every several months. And so I would welcome the opportunity to meet you again. So with that, would someone like to make a motion?
Sure. I'm moved that we vote to extend a conditional offer of employment to, and ma'am, how do you pronounce your first name? Jana. Jana Perez and Christopher Lobianco as permanent police officers for the town of Hingham. This officers, this officer, this offer is contingent upon the successful passing of all required medical and psychological screening examinations and all other requirements related to, but not necessarily limited to, the following. A, successful passing of the required medical examination. B, successful passing of the required physical abilities test. C, successful passing of the required psychological screening process. D, successful passing of all other requirement for entrance into the police academy. E, entering into a satisfactory agreement with the town of Hingham relative to payment of up to $4,000 recruit training fee. F, successful completion of the police academy as determined by the police chief. G, any and all other requirements as mandated by law or regulation. Should the candidates fail to successfully complete all of these conditions as determined in the sole discretion of the town, then this conditional employment, appointment shall be considered null and void. And to the extent necessary, any offer of employment shall be considered rescinded.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to say thank you very much for your.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you to the officers who are here as well. Good night. Congratulations so much. Congratulations. Goals and objectives. We, since, we've, this is the third, third time we're talking about this. Third time's a charm. Nope.
It's gonna be good.
It's a good process. So we, we started out several weeks ago with a recap of accomplishments and proposed goals by the administration. The board gave some input, and we wanted, we wanted Ted and Tom to take a look and understand, and help us understand the effort that would be required to support some additional, additional initiatives, which is this handout that we have here. I don't think we need to go through this presentation. What I might just do is direct us to page nine, which are our near-term goals. And so we, we've, we talked about five near-term goals, not in any particular order, but the Aquarian litigation and the rate case, working with the advisory committee to consider the long-term project input. So basically, looking at all our capital projects and understanding costs and options for paying for those and what it might look like. Design and obtain cost estimates for the North Fire Station. Enter into new contracts with four unions and the Weymouth Compressor Station. We also then had a number of, I'd say probably 10 or 11 other items that were, that we kind of all brought forward. And what Ted and Tom have done is to look at the status and try to give us a sense of, of what stage this is in, whether it's research, study, development, or implementation, as well as the effort for the board and the organization. One being a light effort and five being heavy lifting. So Ted and Tom, I might just kind of ask you, you know, in terms of capacity and bandwidth, assuming that we're adopting these near-term goals, what is your sense of our sort of capacity and ability to address the ideas that the board brought forward?
It depends on which ones you want to address. If the answer is you want to address all of them, the possibility is very slim.
Yep.
Likely of, high likelihood of failure. So I would not recommend that. So I think what you need to do is go through this list, we're here to help you that, with that, and try to identify the things that could be accomplishable this year, either in part or in total. And some things are triggered on other items. And that we know that, you know, some of the expandable, expanding some of the affordable housing options, you know, they may have to wait for other activities that are going on that the board's privy to that would, that would free things up. You know, in terms of, you know, some basic, easier ones to get to, exploring potential external funding sources, friends of groups, things like that, those are not too difficult to set up. A parking garage downtown, that's a pretty big project. That'll take you a lot of time. You're talking about a lot of stakeholders, a lot of owners. You've made a tremendous amount of investment in two, three decades in downtown. It's, you know, I would consider it one of the most vibrant downtowns on the South Shore. And so your work has, has been collectively, over the years, valued. And you see the, the work at Old Derby, Old Derby Academy. So to me, I think those might be some, some big priorities for you. Explore targeted tax relief for needy residents. I mean, I think those are ongoing things that you could ask your finance committee to look at, your finance team, rather, your assessor. We did this in the past, assessor, accountant, treasurer. You know, that's a great tool of folks that were able to, I mean, I think Gene Montgomery came up with three ideas that none of us had considered, because she'd just done some research on what the state did. So those are some things you can get to. I, I think you gotta go through these individually and figure out which ones you want, which ones you consider as high priorities. I think defining progress on Hingham Square parking and traffic concerns and accessory apartments, you know, are huge meaty issues that, like, like I said earlier, will flip to others. And they're not, I don't think, perhaps the accessory apartments is something you could accomplish in a year. The others would take much longer than that. And, and it's late in the year. I know it doesn't seem like it's late in the year, but zoning articles are due by December 1st. You know, it's, we're past August 1st, so now we're hitting September 1st. And that, that, once you hit September, it slides pretty quickly to December. So, you know, that may be something you start this year and work through and get ready for a following year. Clearly, the parking garage in anywhere in downtown is a multi-year process. I think year one would simply be identifying the stakeholders and understanding the range of possibilities, which is, right now, I think the community planning department's looked at Station Street. I know I've talked to all of you about something behind the bank and in that block of buildings that I think would be ideal. But again, you're talking about private property and some public property. Our job is to sort of bring those interests together for conversation. And you can imagine that that would be a, a difficult conversation. Coordinate and define fields efforts. I know that a couple of you guys have talked about that. We spent some time on our side talking about it. We actually think we do a pretty good job of that. We think there's always more to be done, always more areas we could look at. But you have Jay McGrail that you saw earlier. Clearly, he understands how to manage turf. Golf course looks fabulous. But he's helped us with all our fields. And then Mark Thorell, our rec director, the two of The two of them have been working seamlessly now for, I think, a couple of years at least. And I think you're seeing that in the quality of the fields. I will tell you that that's an area where demand is pretty high and pretty consistently high. So I'm not sure we'd ever meet demand in terms of, you know, painting the lines and getting the grass just right.
Can I ask a question there? So the FY '17 accomplishments, including implement, implemented a cooperative program between REC, Country Club, and schools to assess and maintain over 50 acres of athletic fields. Is there a report that came out of that or how does that cooperative program exist? Like what?
It exists by Tom and I meeting with the recreation director who works for Recreation Board, the country club manager who works for us, and the school department who works for school committee, and getting them in a room and saying, how can we do this better and what are we gonna do? And out of that, out of that conversation on bringing the DPW in as the, as the managers of the field from a cutting standpoint, we, we put all those efforts together and we identified who would do what. So we used to have, five or six years ago, different entities would do fertilizer, different entities do pest control, different entities would cut, trim.
Right.
Very inefficient.
Right.
And so we started divvying up the tasks. You do this, you do that, and therefore we can become a little quicker and, and better skilled at it. And also a communication of, I didn't want to hear from a board member of the recreation department that a field hadn't gotten cut.
Right.
If Mark knows about it, he don't need to talk to me. He can talk directly to Jay and work his schedule out or DPW to get it done. So largely, all those things have been resolved within the last, I'd say, two to three years. We haven't had those issues.
And that sounds like it's an administrative task.
Correct.
Okay. So one question I did have though is the coordination maybe as between us and the recreation department with respect to the board of selectmen fields. You know, do we need to revisit that?
Um, you know, I, I'm not sure on the recreation department fields. I would say no, from my perspective, in the sense that, you know, I think it was maybe seven years ago, the board was in my, mired in a disagreement with the recreation commission about who had ownership and control and custody of these fields. And we sort of just got past that. It really doesn't matter who has ownership and control. It just matters that they're being managed properly for the citizens to want to use them. The citizens, if I have a child who wants to play in athletic sport, I don't really care if it's the recreation commission, the selectmen, or the country club. I want to know that my child can go on the field, can use it safely, and enjoy that resource.
Right.
And so we wanted to pull all those issues away and focus on the product.
Right. I agree with that.
I think we got there.
I'm not interested in getting mired in anything, but I don't know, I mean, the last piece of paperwork I looked at, because that's what I do, suggested that whatever sort of formal agreement we had expired.
That, that was an agreement where the recreation department, and I think you've got, you're going back now several, I don't know if anybody on the board on the record, there's nobody on the REC or the board of selectmen that was part of that agreement. And that agreement was a way for us to begin the process of saying, REC, we want you to manage some of these fields on a day-to-day basis. We'll take care of the physical management of it, but we want you to allocate the resource to the community, schedule leagues and do those kind of things. And you know, the pull and tug on that was that agreement where REC wanted ownership before they took control of it. They didn't want to invest dollars from their other resources in a field and then have the selectmen say, no, we're gonna take it and give it to baseball or take it and give it solely to another entity. And a lot of it was politics at some level. I think what staff eventually got to was removing that.
Okay.
How do we get this done?
So it's a staff level thing?
At this point in time, it is.
Okay. I'm good then.
I think it's gonna be just important to make sure the DPW is part of that effort because as we're looking at taking care of a lot of these fields, the DPW does a lot of like, you know, a lot of the taking care of it.
Thank you, Mary. I should've said that in that process.
You know, to me, I, I think, you know, I, I think we want to do that. I might also, you know, we've got fields at the middle school that have finally come online. The school's joined in this effort, so there were a couple of fields at PRS and I know at East that are being kind of rebuilt. So you know, my, my suggestion might be that, you know, we maybe take this up, you know, kind of check in.
Just to make sure it's good.
In the springtime when these fields are on. I think what we're gonna see is in the spring of 2018, we're gonna have sort of more fields online. And I think that'll give us the ability to assess not only capacity but sort of care and custody.
Because it, and then the other piece of this is, I, I would think the community stakeholders, like the folks, the leagues that use the fields, the Hingham Sports Partnership, it's just, I think it's, we have our side of the management effort of this and then we have the, you know, the user side and we want to make sure I feel like that, that's a seamless process. Like you're saying, that the fields are getting cut, the people can't get access, so.
And I think what, what really changed for us a few years ago was putting REC front and center. And they stood, stood up and took, I wouldn't say leadership of that, and I think some of us moved to the backside of it. So we, you know, the DPW, they don't talk to the citizens on a regular basis. They go out and cut, cut the grass and they provide the pesticides and the whipping around the edges. And Mark deals with interfacing with the public and making sure they get what they need, et cetera. And so I think that whole process has, has smoothed out over the last two to three years. You have one, exploring social media as a communication tool. We do this constantly. Maybe we don't hit on every aspect of things we can do, but one of the things you'll hear from me, and you always have and you always will, is that social media is an area where we can get ourselves into a lot of trouble. What I mean by trouble is there's a huge demand for us to push out data through social media. And we have limited capabilities of what we can do. We're not a private organization in the sense of a for-profit private that can allocate significant resources. It's only been a few years since we've had a specific person dedicated, one person dedicated to, on a $24,000 a year contract, to pushing content out on all of our social media sites. And I've, I've, we wouldn't even have gone into social media if the board back then didn't give us that position, because what I was saying to you is, we can't survive in that world without the people, because once we open the door, everyone's gonna want to come in and we're not gonna have anything for them. And so your goal to expand that has to equally match your desire to add to the personnel that will drive this content, because it starts and it's 24/7. I know you're on social media, so I know you guys know this. It doesn't end. So, so when you're thinking about expanding that, try to remember that there's a cost structure associated with that.
I mean, I think when I threw it out there, it's just, it just a way, I, I think people are getting their information in different ways. And you know, I, I think the improvements that, I think you both spearheaded on the website have been helpful. Website's got a more user-friendly, customer-service oriented face. You know, I don't know. I think it's something we should keep on the list. I don't know that it's the top of my list at this point, but I, I think, I think there's an evolution of information sharing and sources that people go to now to get that information. And I just think we need to keep an eye on it.
Absolutely.
You know, I might suggest that we sort of think about that in the lead-up to the budget, because I think it's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's been my observation that, that if the information isn't out there, well-intentioned people try to fill that void. And we spend a lot of time and effort then having to unravel.
Right.
Or trying to clarify.
Right.
Or trying to correct.
Right.
And so what, you know, and, and again, so what I think is happening is, to your point, people are looking for information, they're looking for it on social media. And so, you know, how do we strike that balance? I think we, as we get into the fall, you know, there are a couple of positions or activities in general government that we talk about. We talk about things like a grant writer. We talk about things like more social media support. You know, I, I think we would maybe want to look at that. And what I would suggest, just because I think it happens every year in the budget, is if we are looking at more resources for something, we need to put a strong business case forward.
Well, or can it be as simple as, you know, some PS, like, like, you know, the last several years, I know members of the board of selectmen would utilize Channel 9 and there was like, you know, the issue corner or whatever. So you have the, you have a 10-minute spiel on particular issues. Like, you know, can you, can you informally use social media to, to do a public service announcement from time to time on the issues that we're considering in the budget? I, I just think we should keep it on our radar screen, because I do, I, I see that evolution and like you, I see what the dangers are when there's a vacuum and there's an absence of information. You know, I just think Paul Healy maybe should run the town Instagram.
That's a great idea. I'm not so sure. I'm gonna, I'm gonna push back a little bit on that.
You hear what I'm saying about this though. Like you, you could do, you could do some short spots that don't require.
That's a good idea.
So anyway. Yep. Let's just keep thinking about it.
What I'll also do is Tom and I will ask the IT department to give us some ideas as to how they think they might be able to enhance our program.
Okay. All right.
The next one is expand employee-staff voluntary training opportunities. And specifically, we're targeting a much more expansive ethics training planned for September 26th. 26th?
Awesome.
Is that right? 26th?
I believe so.
That's great.
It's the night of your meeting.
Okay.
And we're doing it from 5:00 to 7:00. Only one session. And so we're gonna ask the employees and the, and the volunteers, board and committee members to, to go. And it's, it's not gonna be, you know, your old, how do they say, it's not gonna be your old dad's ethics.
Your grandfather's, right.
Presentation. This is gonna be.
Some things never change, dude.
Well, we're gonna have a little bit of that, but we're gonna add a few other things to it, because it's not all about, you know, filling out the right forms and, you know, what you can't take for gratuity or can, or who, you know, those kind of things. It's, it's a little bit more about how you conduct yourself and how you talk to, and manage your job and other, other, other people. Industry best practices with regard to historic districts, you know, is something that I think, you know, would be a research work and effort and something that is worthwhile going forward. You have the greatest collection of historic assets in the United States of America, from what people tell me. Single-family homes and such a vast collection that are actually being used every day as opposed to often a field in a museum quality side. So if you want to protect it, I think you always want to think of it, especially as I think about people aging and moving on, not always understanding or appreciating the significance of the history that was there before them. So as we all move through this time continuum, that might be a challenge for the town in 20 or 30 years.
Well, and that, you, you talked about getting other folks involved in that. I mean, I've had an initial conversation with Hans and Andrea of the Historic Districts Commission and I, you know, I, I did think it was something that they were interested in working on as well. So I mean, I don't think it necessarily needs to all reside with us.
I would think that it would emanate from them.
Correct. But I think in this case, it's one of your goals that you're pushing in that direction to say you'd like it, them to work on this.
Right.
I might, I might just suggest that we sort of define what sort of outcomes we're looking for, just so that it's, it's going in a direction that.
Right.
Doesn't create a surprise down the road.
Right.
So your next item.
For the process side.
Your next item is to anticipate and plan for long-term capital needs, create milestones in the short term. As you know, the advisory committee's already formed a subcommittee to research. We think you're gonna be dealing with this now. You'll be dealing with it in the budget, you'll be dealing with it in more articles in town meeting. And the sooner you can get a handle on the totality of all your projects and, and some idea of how you're gonna finance them all, I think it'll ease people's tensions in this area.
And I would just have a little bit of information. So I actually think this is very similar to the, one of the near-term goals we have in our, in sort of our list, but I, I talked to Jim Taylor both yesterday and today and the group actually met this morning. And you know, what, what the timetable that they're looking at is that this, this, this task force is actually going to be presenting their work and their work product to the advisory committee on October 10th. And so shortly after that, what I've suggested to Jim is that shortly after that, they come and present to us and also contact the school committee to see if the school committee is interested in having them on an agenda. And essentially, what Jim affirmed for me is that they've, you know, what, what, what they've done is created a framework to be able to say, you know, how much capacity do we have within our existing budget for new capital projects? And the short answer is not a whole lot, but they're gonna tell us how much that is. And then they're gonna look and say, what are, if you look at debt that is rolling off, excluded debt that is rolling off, if we were to replace some or all of that, what would that mean? And it also gives the ability to identify alternate funding sources, so CPC money or other things. And so I think from, that their work product is going to be able to shape and inform this and start the conversation in the fall, which is what I'm pretty excited about. So you know, we'll, we'll get them on an agenda for October. And I think what's really important for me is to get a sense from the community of what sort of an appetite people have for how quickly they want to move. One thing that Jim Taylor also mentioned is that, that they also talked to our town financial advisor and they've gotten some information sort of about, you know, debt ratios and things within the town, and mentioned that this is actually a year in which the advisory committee looks at its financial policy. So it's, it's revisited every few years. And so actually, this work is gonna be beneficial to the advisory committee because this question of debt and debt as a percentage of your operating budget is something. So I actually think this is going to happen and I'm very grateful to the current and former members of the advisory committee who are doing this important work for us.
Great. Well.
Helped message to deliver to very different.
Well, I think the advisory committee's view is, we're, we're gonna tell you sort of what all this means and what the options are. They're not gonna identify projects. They're gonna talk about, you know, what happens if you take on $50 million of debt? What happens if you take on $10 million of debt? And, and the question of prioritizing the projects and understanding where they fall, the advisory committee believes strongly that that belongs to the policy boards and I, I would concur with that.
Be interesting to see what they come up with.
Yeah.
So we've already touched on the next item, developing strategic partnerships across town departments. You know, for example, we have a strategic partnership with the recreation department and the, and the country club. And we'll continue to do that. In fact, you know, one of the things we'll do is we'll incorporate some of that discussion in our department head meetings, where we'll challenge our department heads to think about how they might be able to help another department.
I also think that's just part of mindset here too, you know, sort of like Beth Rockoff's comments a couple of weeks ago and you following up with them tonight. It's just kind of keeping that, that open mind, that mindset to involve, you know, whatever resources we have available to us across all departments and divisions.
So the next item actually is easy for us to do, board of selectmen outreach efforts. I understand that you're gonna now meet in different areas, so library next week and school, a couple of schools in September or something like that.
Root Awakenings, The Snug.
Well, now we talk about non-public buildings and so we have to make sure we have a lot of other issues there, so.
Linden, Linden Ponds.
Yeah, Linden Ponds, yeah. So I, I think, you know, our office will coordinate that with you and I think we might want to touch base with number five, the exploring the use of social media when we do something like that, so they actually know where you are. So things we can accomplish. Expanding affordable housing options. You know, some of the things are ripe for public conversation, others are really just not. But you know that the Affordable Housing Trust is looking at their options and so is the housing authority.
And so one of the things, you know, I think it falls under the umbrella of assisted living that I didn't mention last time around when I was ranting on about my list, is just kind of adding to that concept of special needs, special needs young adult housing or special needs housing as a, you know, another component of affordable and assisted housing in Hingham. So.
I think that accessory apartments fits within this conversation as well, because I think that, you know, you, you can have somebody who's.
Absolutely.
Developmentally delayed and they're gonna be a lifetime partner with you and, but yet they need that.
Absolutely.
And this is happening in town right now and it's been happening for years.
And so I.
To have the courage to address this.
Yeah, and so I, I was thinking, I mean, to me, the accessory dwelling piece, I would think could move forward, you know, on a, like now. And then these, these other kind of project concepts, I just, I just want to keep working on and I just want to add that in as a, as another descriptor of the kind of assisted living that we might consider. But I, I agree with you. I mean, I think, I absolutely agree that, that the accessory dwelling piece is a, is a piece of affordability and a piece of living assistance. affordability and a piece of living assistance for, you know, for families to have as part of their resources.
Now, we've listed this as a two-year completion effort, but it is possible for you to get to this, this fall, and get through the town meeting this year. It just depends on how much you want to focus on this versus other issues. You have other things going on. You have the Route 3A Rotary. You know, you have Aquarian and that whole issue circulating around in the late fall. So, you know, in any area, you and I have been talking about bandwidth, because you gotta keep a little options open, because you heard about monopoles yesterday. And so, think, you know, you're vibrant government, a vibrant community. Things are gonna come, and you gotta keep that capacity to be able to deal with them.
You know, and just my sense on the accessory dwelling, and I think we all got an email from one of the residents who volunteered when this task force was created. I think that there are two pieces to that work. I think there's the work to be done to say, you know, what do we want to do in terms of a bylaw or, you know, making any sort of modifications? But then I think that the heavier lifting is the discussion, the socializing, the having public meetings, and then refining, modifying. And, you know, I think, I actually would feel more comfortable if this was a two-year goal, because I think those conversations, they kind of have a cadence of their own.
They would be really crammed if you tried to do it this year.
And I, you know, I think we've had many instances where we've had warrant articles hearings and said, this is great work, but it's not ripe yet.
Yep.
And I'd rather take the time and get it right.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I just think it's something we need to start. I think we need to, we've got a great, we've got a great amount of information, sort of technical information that we've collected. We've got a number of, a number of resources, folks that we can bring to bear on this issue. And, you know, I think we should, you know, maybe have some conversations with you both to figure out how to, you know, how to get the ball rolling. But I don't, you know, I don't disagree. I'm not, I think this is a really, really important issue for the town, and I completely understand that folks, you know, right, what happened the last time was, I think, sort of, sort of, sort of seeing...
You're making a great point.
I know. Really exciting point, I'm trying. You know, people were poking holes at what you could do if you wanted to sort of stretch it, and, you know, I get that. But I also think this is a meaningful tool to people, for people to have access to.
You know, maybe what I, I think we're all in agreement here. We want to put some effort into it, we want to do it right. What I think we need to do is set some sort of interim steps, where, you know, where do we want to be in six months, where do we want to be in a year, just to make sure that it gets moving.
So, what we were hoping we would get out of you tonight is some direction as to which one of these lists of about 10 different items that you wanted us to focus on. I think we're getting that pretty clearly. And what we'll do is give you back a roadmap on how to get to each of these items. Obviously, you will correct our roadmaps as you, you know, fine-tune it yourselves. You got a couple left here. Explore potential external funding sources, including friends of groups. We've asked town council to research laws governing external fundraising, but we know that friends groups can do it, pretty much. But I think we've asked John Coffin to look at more formalized, larger-scale fundraising efforts that folks have asked us to consider. And then, exploring potential storage facilities in Bearcove Park is a smaller item of a goal, which we've already started doing. Tom's already identified some buildings over there that we have some storage capabilities.
You know, and I see this storage in Bearcove Park as being really important to do this fall, and the reason, the reason that I say that is that depending on where the fire station may be located, that may displace some school storage facilities, and I think the school committee and administration have rightly pointed out that that is, that is active part, that space is necessary. So, you know, if we can rehab some existing buildings to create that storage, that's more cost-effective than, like, building new storage.
So, we're looking at that area along with, and I know Tom is diligently looking at reducing storage requirements by actually getting rid of things.
And that warrant article that we passed is really helpful in that, but to me, the storage in Bearcove Park goes along with the North Fire Station. So, that one, that one kind of jumps up on my list.
Yep.
Okay?
I thought this was great. I mean, it's really nice to see the stuff packaged. I think you can start to get your arms around it, so I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else to...
No, I think we're done.
Okay. Next, board and committee appointments. So, moving, I've got like a couple different folders going on. So, we've got some additional appointments to be made. I'd say at the start that we've gotten a number of applicants for the compressor station task force. We're talking about scheduling some time to, a convenient time to get enough critical mass to interview people. So, I think we're not prepared to make those appointments tonight, but we are, I think, prepared to make a couple, and I think we want to discuss, we want to discuss a few. I might just like to start out, we have a vacancy on the Affordable Housing Trust, and Kathleen Amonte had put forward a Talent Bank application. She has a background in affordable housing. She is a longtime Hangham resident. I had the opportunity to speak with her by phone, and I think her background would just really complement and round out the Affordable Housing Trust as they continue the work that Ted described. So, if my colleague...
Move to appoint Kathleen Amonte to the Affordable Housing Trust to fill an expired term ending June 30th, 2018.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'm looking at zoning board. We have a vote list, yet the zoning board, we have, we have the possibility to appoint to the ZBA.
Can I respectfully hold on that?
Yep.
Okay.
Just want to get it right.
Okay. Yep. Okay, I'm just looking down our vote list. We still have a few openings on the Bearcove Park Committee. I don't know if anyone is advancing anything tonight.
I don't have anybody for that tonight.
Okay.
I think your next committee is the Foster School Building Committee.
I have CPC next, actually.
Okay.
I'd like to move...
Oh, yeah, I missed that one, sorry.
I'd like to move that we appoint Bill Harrington. I had an opportunity, we had an opportunity to meet with Bill during Talent Bank, and I've had a couple of opportunities to talk to Bill about his further interest in a number of different volunteer possibilities, and this was something I think he was interested in, and I think he brings, you know, a long time, being a longtime resident of Hangham, an interest in the functions of community preservation. And as a lawyer, I think he'd bring a great skill set to that committee. So, I'd like to move to appoint him to the Community Preservation Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Conservation, we still have a few openings.
Council on Aging, did you have someone for Council on Aging you were looking about?
Linda Powers, that's a very nice woman, very kind. I think she'd be beautiful on it.
Okay. Do you like to make a motion?
Sure. I'd move to appoint Powers to the Council on Aging for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I just mentioned Sally for the record. That's replacing a spot vacated by Lisa Comans. Okay.
I don't believe you have any appointments for conservation tonight, but you do have two spots.
Right.
And I think you had asked me to remind you about that.
Yes. We need to do some reach out on that, because that's...
Really, really important work.
Absolutely. We still have three vacancies on the Cultural Council, so, or actually, I believe we have two vacancies on the Cultural Council still. Development and Industrial Commission, I would like to put forward the name of Kevin O'Brien. Kevin is someone who came through the Talent Bank process. We talked to Kevin about the DNIC, that was one of his interests, and I'd like to appoint him to a position, a three-year term ending 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Foster School Building Committee. So, I know we've all, maybe before kind of putting names out, I think we've, we've all been working pretty hard on this. We have a great situation where we have more qualified and interested candidates than we have available positions, which, while it's, I think we're probably the envy of other communities, I don't know, but it's made it easy.
Right.
It's felt hard. It's felt hard, because for every person that you say yes to, there's an implied no for a few others. I would, I would hope that some citizens who we don't appoint, we would have the opportunity to appoint to some other boards and committees if they would be so interested. But that is, it's challenging. There are a lot of important skills that are needed on that committee, and we have a lot of candidates who bring a lot of different, a lot of different things.
Perhaps you could just refresh the memory of the residents with respect to the journey?
Sure. So, the journey, thank you. The Foster School Building Committee was created as part of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting, and it called for a seven-person committee, two appointments by the moderator, two appointments by the Board of Selectmen, and three appointments by the school committee. Both the moderator and the school committee have made their appointments.
And if we, you know, we, as you might remember from town meeting, I think our interest is in trying to work with the MSBA to either repair and renovate or construct a new school in the Foster School location. And so, Massachusetts laws and regulations also specify the membership of school building committees, to some extent.
Right. And they also, they also allow that, and in the warrant article language, it allows that if there is technical expertise that is required on a committee, that it gives the school committee the latitude to appoint that. So, you know, understanding that sometimes it's hard...
In addition.
Yes, yes, in addition. So, I actually, I spent a lot of time on the MSBA website, looking at the building committee composition and looking at the different requirements. It, you know, includes, you know, in addition to the seven-person committee, it requires, you know...
Finance person.
Administration, finance people, very important roles that, you know, folks like John Ferris, folks like John Ferris play. One of the previous appointments is someone who has construction expertise, and so that requirement, that MSBA requirement, the committee is fortunate to already have somebody with that expertise. The committee also is required per the MSBA to have a school committee member on it, and the school committee did appoint someone to that. So, as I look at the template that the MSBA has put forward, and I look at, I look at the roster, I, it's my assessment that we have fulfilled those requirements.
Yeah, that was my assessment as well. Yep. You know, it's a committee that's gonna need a long-term commitment. This project could go, what do we think, four years or so? It's a, it's a committee that's gonna ebb and flow a little bit. They're gonna need to get to work. There'll be some downtime, but then, you know, there'll be some intensity in service. You know, I think when we talked to folks that came before Talent Bank and some additional phone calls that I've made since Talent Bank, you know, we've, we've tried to relay the importance of really making a commitment to this committee. You know, when you're on, you're on, and, you know, we'd like to see you there when we put the shovel in the ground. Communication skills, to me, was a really important element. You know, this is a stressful, will be a stressful assignment. It's a, it's a heavy lift, and, you know, if history is any teacher to us here, at the end of the day, you know, we end up having to make some tough decisions about programmatic needs and facilities costs. So, you need folks that can work together constructively to build consensus and to make, I think, financially grounded recommendations to the advisory committee, the school committee, and the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah. I think, and I've mentioned this, I think, in the past, to me, another, another thing that makes this project a little bit more complex is the uncertainty of knowing whether the MSBA will invite us into the program. And I think that we have a very engaged parent community at Foster School, that rightly so, is very concerned and very interested in us moving on this. I think that we also know that being invited into the MSBA program means millions of state dollars coming into Hangham to working for us here locally. And, to me, ensuring that there is ongoing, regular communication between...
Yeah, absolutely.
The parents in the school and the building committee to educate them on the process, help them understand where things are. I view that as being particularly important, because, you know, if the MSBA said, if we are not accepted into the program, then we have to decide, do we wait? And then if we wait, that's another year. And what happens if the MSBA says no again? So, I, I think with that uncertainty, a lot of the communication and the access to committee members is gonna be crucially important on this in a way that it wasn't, for example, on the middle school.
Do we have committee members that have children in Foster School already?
We do, we do have a few. But we don't have anyone who's actively involved, for example, in the PTO. And so, I think, I think there are some links.
It's my understanding we have one individual that's on the building committee that served previously on a school building committee.
Yep. Yep. And I think the, a member of the school committee who's been involved in the big capital projects and who, while Ed Schreier was not a member of the school building committee, my recall from the advisory committee was that he was integrally involved in a lot of, a lot of the big capital projects, maybe not necessarily the middle school, but, for example, the
Certainly, the Fields Project.
High School Fields Project.
Yep.
So, I...
Yeah, I've talked to Ed. Okay.
And...
Ladies, do you move?
Well, I'd like to move that we appoint Jennifer Murphy. Let's, let me get the vote right, to the Foster School Building Committee.
This is a unity second.
Appreciate it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone, all right. I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Linda Hill to the Foster School Building Committee. Linda served nine years on the school committee, former chair, very involved in building projects and school issues, and at the same time, she's, well, I think maybe her children went to Foster, her children are now out of the nest, and I think that that's an important demographic to have represented on the committee as well.
I'll second that. I like Linda. She'll do a great job.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving down, we've got the Harbor Development Committee. Are we ready on that one tonight?
Well, I, I would put forward Bruce McEloney. We saw him early on in the Talent Bank process. He is fairly new to Hangham, has been involved in governance in his prior community, expressed an interest in the harbor, and I think he's retiring from a number of startup companies, if my memory serves me correctly, and I think he could bring some fresh insights into, into the Harbor Development Committee.
Second.
Second? I am not ready on the, I'd ask that we hold off on the Historical Commission, if we could, please. Okay, by me?
Mass Port Advisory?
Yep.
I do have a name to put forward there, if people are ready for that. Where's the vote? I'd like to nominate Katie McBrien to the Mass Port Community Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we still have two positions on the Veterans Council, but I think we still have to work on that.
Working on it.
Okay, so, we still all have some work to do on-
We've made some progress.
Some of these, but we've made, we've made great progress, and, and for those who are, who have interviewed with us and are still, you know, waiting on appointments, we, we very much appreciate your patience. I hope, one of the things that, that people take from this is that we take these appointments very, very seriously. We've invested a lot of time in it. I think we all believe that it is one of our most important roles, and, and we want it, we want to get it right.
Yep.
We want to get it right. Okay. Selectmen Town Administrator Reports.
Do we have a vote on the vote?
Oh, I beg your pardon.
We've got a couple small votes.
We still have a couple small votes. Thank you. Yep.
So, your first one is to sign an agreement with Chadwick Baross for a sidewalk plop.
So, is this the one that was broken down, or what, was this an additional one?
It's part of, mine's is part of the capital placement schedule. Those vehicles in our 2018 capital budget is being purchased through the OSD. I'm not sure if it was previously damaged, and that's why we got it through, but-
There is one that's broken down. This is replacing an older one. There's another one that broke down last year that we're hoping to replace next year.
Okay.
And it's in front of you because it's a $127,000 contract that cedes my administrator authorities.
But, and it, as you pointed out, it's come through the, the capital budget process-
Correct.
At DPW.
Yeah. Well, so, what we've asked the departments to do is, and you see this in your cover letters, they, I want them to specify when they're asking us where they're getting their funding from, so it's pretty obvious.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make, okay. I'll make a motion that we sign the agreement with Chadwick Baross for a Prenoth Bomberdier Model SW4S Sidewalk Tractor, does not include cable.
You can see why I waited for you to make that motion.
Second. Someone who's always eager for Main Street to be plowed with a sidewalk, I'll second that.
Tom understands what I'm saying.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, Karen, maybe you could do the wine and malt beverages licenses?
That's my, that's my sweet spot. All right. I would like to, first of all, is this our new form? Looks awesome. I would like to move that we approve the issuance of a wine and malt beverages license to Denise Arondo on behalf of the McCourt Foundation for the Torrid South Shore Athletic Festival to be held at Wampatuck State Park on Saturday, September 23rd, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And I see that the chief has signed off on this.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me again?
Yep.
I would like to move that we approve the issuance of a wine and malt beverages license to Suzanne King on behalf of the Hingham Gridiron Club for the Harborman at the Harbor. Fundraising and social be held at the Hingham Maritime Center on Saturday, September 2nd, 2017, from 6:30 p.m. to 10:30 p.m.
Second.
Okay. And parking's at the bathing beach, I see.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And you're, that's okay?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ted, do you just want to mention this vote on the Mass DOT Signal Maintenance?
The Avalon is, in the final conclusion of the building project at the shipyard, they're modifying a signal, and the agreement that is required to be signed is required to include the town in it. I think Real Estate Council gave this to us, and it, it allows Avalon to continue forward, essentially approving, if I understand this correctly, the, the intersection in the corridor in that area.
Yeah, and my understanding was that during the permitting process, the, these traffic, there were a number of traffic modifications that were proposed that will, that will actually benefit the entire corridor, in fact, going down to Downer Ave, and that this, this is an important part of implementing that.
Correct. Exactly.
Okay.
This is great.
Want to make a motion?
This is what we've asked for.
Okay.
Move to authorize the Town Administrator to execute the Mass DOT Traffic Signal Maintenance Agreement, allowing Avalon Two Inc. to change the timing at five intersections and change the phasing at one intersection along the Route 3A corridor.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ted or Tom, can we just, like, you know, every time that these things change, can we just make sure that, that within the town, that, you know, for the first couple of weeks after this has changed, we got a vehicle to sort of get in touch with somebody if there's some aspect of the timing that has unintended consequences?
Sure.
I just, you know, sometimes experience-
Yeah. We, we have that contact anyway.
Okay.
If anyone ever needed that.
Okay.
We, we can access the people who, who actually do the physical changes.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the catch on the votes. Selectmen Town Administrator Reports.
Tom's going to take the Town Administrator Report this week.
Okay.
So, it's recently come to the town's attention that there are several Wi-Fi monopoles being erected by, or planned to be erected by the MBTA for the purposes of Wi-Fi. I'm just going to read a, a statement that will explain it, I think, in a little bit more detail. While we are still searching out the details, which have been difficult to obtain, the town has learned that the MBTA is planning to install six Wi-Fi monopole communication towers in the town of Hingham located approximately 1.3 miles in the green, every 1.3 miles within the Green Bush right of way. This is part of a planned project to place 330 of these monopoles along the entire commuter rail system that will affect 60 communities. Five of the proposed monopole towers in Hingham will be approximately 74 feet high, and the sixth will be located partially within the tunnel and will therefore be shorter in height. The town has received little notification regarding this proposed project, and the initial information we received was completely inaccurate, as it described the project as part of the federally mandated train safety program. In fact, the towers are not safety-related and are solely intended to provide very limited free Wi-Fi service to commuters, with expanded Wi-Fi service to be provided to commuters for an additional fee. It will also allow the MBTA's licensee, BAI Communications, to sell co-location on the, on the monopoles to other private, third-party, for-profit companies. Staff and council have been working diligently to pull together available information, including the proposed MBTA contract, proposed locations of the monopoles, possible impacts on the town and its residents, and we will be updating the board and the residents and making information available as quickly as we can. The goal of the town is to make sure that the MBTA carefully considers whether this project is necessary and whether responsible, or reasonable alternatives have been explored and ways to mitigate the impacts to the town. I am working and have been for the last couple of days, as the letter says, staff and council, to prepare a detailed letter documenting the impacts to the town, or the likely impacts to the town. I guess I would ask, it's not on the vote list tonight, I don't know how you feel about it, but I guess I would ask for maybe authorization to send that letter, or if it can just simply come from, from the Town Administrator, how you feel.
Because there's a hearing on the 14th.
There is a hearing on the 14th. We would say, we would want to send the MBTA these thoughts in advance of the 14th, though I'm also told the 14th may not be the final, the final-
So, what we were going to propose is that we'll draft a letter. It'll come from me. I'll give you guys opportunity to look at it, add your, as always, your input, but you guys will also have a second bite at some later point in time to do the same thing.
Are you okay with that, Paul?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I think that's, yeah.
So, we're just trying to get, get a stake in the ground.
Yep. Okay. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Paul?
I know.
Karen?
Nope.
Okay. I have an announcement, and this is going to be hard to read. The Board of Selectmen today announced that Town Administrator Ted Alexiades will retire on December 31st, 2017. "The town of Hingham will benefit for a long time because of Ted's two decades of service, first as Finance Director and then as Town Administrator," said Board of Selectmen Chair Mary Power. "Ted was instrumental in the town achieving the highest bond ratings from Fitch, Moody's, and Standard &amp; Poor's. We will miss Ted greatly, but we support and applaud his decision to spend more time with his father and family." "Serving the town of Hingham has been my honor," said Mr. Alexiades. "The people of this community and the many members who selflessly volunteer in elected and appointed positions contribute to the vibrancy and pride of place that define the town. I'm proud of the many accomplishments we've achieved together, the professionalism of both our elected officials and community members who volunteer on the many boards that oversee town initiatives. I have made the difficult but important decision to step down to be able to spend time with my father, who turned 85 this year and has been suffering with advanced Alzheimer's for the past few years. I have come to a fork in the road. I can continue to work and let others care for my father in his final years, or I can care for him myself. Managing the Beale Street Housing Project, which will bring the town into uncontested state compliance for its affordable housing inventory, showed the depths of Ted's expertise that will benefit Hingham for decades to come," said Selectman Paul Healy. "But the highlight of my 36 years of service to the town was to join Ted in accepting the Freedom Award in the Pentagon in August 2015. Hingham was the only small town in America to receive the award. Ted's contributions cannot be overstated. Ted has made a lasting contribution to the town of Hingham, one that will extend well beyond his time with us," said Selectman Karen Johnson. "When I was Chair of the Advisory Committee, Ted's advice and counsel were invaluable in the wake of the financial crisis. The town was able to move forward with its important priorities and maintain its AAA bond rating. Ted exhibits a rare blend of vision and administrative expertise, and his ability to work with and educate our boards, commissions, and committees allows all of us to advance the work of the town in a thoughtful and financially grounded manner. As a selectman, I will miss the opportunity to work with Ted. Among his accomplishments, Mr. Alexiades has overseen seven consecutive years of balanced budgets and the advancement of affordable housing initiatives to help the town reclaim its zoning while increasing the town's fund balance reserves. Mr. Alexiades is most proud of the relationship he has with the volunteers and employees of the town. The government of Hingham is a labor organization," said Mr. Alexiades. "We provide services, and it's our people who do that. Our strength is our employees and volunteers. They are wonderful, dedicated, caring people who have made my time here very special. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, current and past, and the town as a whole, we salute Ted for his service, his dedication, and his commitment to the town of Hingham. We wish him nothing but the best in the years ahead."
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.